The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
The first thing that we have is the approval of the official agenda. And usually at this time, we look to see if we have items that may be considered for consent purposes.
Mr. Mayor and Board, for your consideration, some recommendations for possibly placement on the consent agenda. Of course, as is our cousin, if anybody wants any of the items fully discussed, then certainly we will do so. Roman numeral eight, mayor's business, item B. Then, Roman numeral 10, department business, airport, all four items. B, the city clerk, item number two, financial statements. C, fire department, the one item. Personnel items, one, two, and four. Police items, one through five, all items. And public services items, one through three, for your consideration as possibly consent agenda items.
Do we have any other suggestions regarding the agenda? And as you notice, the basic changes, please, have been... One presentation by Mrs. Ramona Pollard has been taken off of the agenda. We have added a consideration of a resolution between the Golden Triangle Regional Airport and the Ford County Electric Association, if you'll note. Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the official agenda with the changes and the consent items?
So move, Ms. Mayor.
Second.
Motion to move in the second. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. All those opposed? Approval of the minutes of May 15th and the special call made on the May 24th. I think the corrections were made... Mr. Cox, last time you pointed out, Mr. Temple was not here.
Yes, sir.
And were the corrections made according to...
They were. And I'd move approval of the minutes of our recess meeting held on May 15th, 2007.
Do we have a...
The other one, who, or separate?
Separate.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve May 15th with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
And also move approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of May 24th, 2007.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the minutes of May 24th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That was passes. Comments by the mayor and the board of aldermen. Those of you who are here perhaps to hear Mrs. Ramona Pollard on Cryt Street, she is not presenting tonight. That issue will not be up tonight. You may leave or you may stay and see what happens to this interesting board meeting.
Ms. Prue, what word did we get from Ms. Pollard?
Ms. Pollard called us after the lady said that she was ill and would request that she be on the agenda for the next four meetings, which is July 17th. She requests to come back back.
I don't know if you'll notice on here, we have the MSU logo, if you remember, discussed about a year or so ago, in which we would paint MSU and the street intersections. We do have that, and we will start this next week of beginning to say, implement MSU, the lettering on the streets. It won't be maroon because the street color itself will end up being part of the lettering, but it's... was a lot less than what we had previously done. Would like to announce today that we have a second hotel, which is the old work. The lot has been sold across from the Hilton Garden Inn that will begin pretty soon. There will be approximately 130 something rooms. There will be a Holiday Inn candlelight suite group that will be going there. I understand Mr. Gillis that will be building a Shell station in the vicinity. We'll have a boulevard, seven-foot wide boulevard that will go to this particular hotel. So, we're very fortunate that we have two nice-sized hotels that will get started here pretty soon. This will go right below the hill of the Federal Land Bank. So, we're looking forward to these developments that will continue to be in our city. At this time, we come to citizen comments. This is when the citizens have an opportunity to express themselves within three minutes. If you go over that, I will come down and interrupt you. Those that would like to come forward and speak their piece, they may do so at this time. Hello there. If you'll tell us who you are and what ward you represent, please.
Mr. Mayor and Board of Aldermen, my name is Dot Livingston, and I am from Ward 5. My husband Wayne and I reside at 239 Cryt Street, which is directly across the street from our little heart, daycare. I know that Ramona Pollard has removed herself from this board meeting tonight, but I would like to share with you what I have brought to this meeting tonight. I have with me tonight a signed petition.
That's a long one.
It is. 61 of the neighborhood residents have signed this petition. I have copies for you. I would like for the copies to be held, and if you see fit, that this not be allowed to come up again. Tonight also, there are six to seven, eight neighbors that have gone out of their way to appear tonight because we were told, and we looked on the internet and saw this was coming up again. My research on this daycare shows that the Rosenkrenz and Jacksons, who lived in 238 Cryt Street, ran an in-home daycare. And that's why Mrs. Pollard was grandfathered in, in a non-conforming use, because the previous owners ran a daycare in their homes. A home daycare program run by these residents is what... was what was in operation before. But today, that is not so. Today, we live with a full-fledged commercial operation that is not a residence. Ms. Pollard does not live there. She lives in Timberpo. Today, anywhere from 30 to 42 automobiles come and go each business day and creates a very safe and dangerous traffic problem in our neighborhood. If the daycare is allowed to expand by enclosing the two-car carport, another eight to 10 automobiles can be added to this traffic flow. As the carport exists today, even though it is under the same roof line, that carport is not used for daycare. It cannot be used because it is not safe for the children to be on that carport. It is too close to the traffic. If the carport is enclosed, if she's allowed to enclose it, she will add 400 square feet, and it is definitely expanding a non-conforming use because she cannot use that carport as it is. With this petition from my neighborhood, we are requesting that the expansion of this daycare center be denied for the second and final time. Cryt Street is a residential area. It is zoned R2, and it's not zoned to handle a full-fledged business operation such as this daycare. I thank you for your time, and I want to leave with you copies of this petition. And I would like for it to go on file, so that if this comes up again, you will have this information.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Anyone else at this time would like to take their three minutes? How many people are here tonight with the Cryt Street situation? Why don't you raise your hands? Okay. Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and Board. My name's Aaron Turner, Ward 7. Citizens have a few things of concern. At the last board meeting, I spoke about the speed on Wood Street and the true street from Wood Street to 12.
The short street right there.
Short, short street. Now, we have a problem of the citizens, we park on the street and come out, we have a They would like to understand if you're going from Wood Street to 12, is that the right parking? Or if you're coming from 12 to Wood, is that the correct parking? Hello, we just want to understand because I definitely want to walk out of my home and the police and the citizens intuit about a citation. Another situation is the last red light going down 182 East. We have people running that red light, and we almost had an accident on Monday. The person ran the red light and didn't see the oncoming vehicle. Those are the concerns.
Cameras for red light running would be very helpful, wouldn't it, Mr. Turner?
I wouldn't want to get hurt.
Yeah.
But they just concern that they are running that red light, the last light going out
Anyone else that'd like to take three minutes? We will start with our public appearances by those that have made requests through the office. Ms. Cross, I believe that you're the first one.
I'm Lou Cross, and I'm from Ward 1. I'm here to bring to your attention the events of my last two weeks. And I'm not going to go through them, but I gave you a copy, the sequence of the things that happened between Northland Cable and myself. There was a line put across the front of my yard. There was no pole for it to be attached to, and we do live on Forest Hill Drive for a reason. The trees are very important to us. And without my knowledge, they had already connected cables to some of the trees that were on the edge of my property. These were to serve two homes, the east of my property, which originally were not part of the subdivision. Now, you have a map of where my lot is and the easement, which my husband granted in 1978 for underground access only. I did not have a copy of that easement, and obviously Northland Cable did not bother to check. Once a service person came to my yard and saw only a pole at the northwest corner and nothing east of there, that should have been a red flag for them to check and see why that was so. The real reason I'm here is to talk about the prevention of this sort of thing happening to any other citizen that lives in Starkville. This is a very special place to me. I've raised five children here, and I'm excited about the growth that the city has, if it's planned and well-regulated. The cable is a very minute thing when you're talking about the whole development of the place, but it's very important to individual citizens, to some more so than others. And I got a copy of the ordinance, 206-03, and I had asked that you have copies of this, and it was told that that wasn't necessary. So, I have marked three different places that I wanted to refer you to. Page 3, Section 7, Systems Construction, and it talks about, "All installations of equipment shall be durable and installed in accordance with the good engineering practices. This does not include hanging cable on a tree," which that was the fact that they did. "Small trees in the edge of my yard." Now, previously, they had attached it for bigger trees. I don't know if you've ever thought about the value of a tree if you try to replace it. This represents years of growth. Ordinances and state laws so that as not to interfere with the right of the public or individual property owners, and that's in the ordinance. Under D of Section 7, it talks about the grant of joint use of poles. There was no pole at all. On page 4, and I numbered these, they were not numbered, but it's the fourth page of the printout. Page 4, Section 11, Complaint Procedures. The grantee shall maintain a business office or toll-free telephone listing in the city for the purpose of receiving inquiries and complaints for its subscribers and the general public. Grantee shall endeavor to investigate all complaints within two business days of their seat and shall in good faith attempt to resolve them swiftly and actively." If you look at my sequence, it took 15 days. The thing that I most wanted to talk about and to ask you to seriously consider is Section 2, Inspection Administration. Excuse me, Section 21, Additional Regulations. The city reserves the right to adopt, in addition to the provisions included in this ordinance, such additional reasonable regulations as it shall find necessary in the exercise of its policy power. I'm not burdening you with all the details of what I went through because that's not important, except that it is a symptom of something that really needs your attention. And I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. We now have a presentation by Daniel Carruth. Is there... Are you doing... I saw the chief get up, and I knew this had something to do with that, so he's going to join you.
I'm going to join Daniel just for a second to give you a brief introduction. Board and audience, this is Mr. Daniel Carruth. He's a Research Associate in Human Systems Engineering Research at the Center for Advanced Vehicular Systems, which is CAVS at the university. And Daniel and his associates at CAVS are currently leading efforts to develop simulations of human behavior for military and law enforcement tasks. He's also involved in efforts to apply human factors research to current issues in law enforcement. Now, that sounds pretty technical. Let me break that down to you in layman terms and as a country boy police chief. I've never seen this type of cutting-edge technology applied to law enforcement except at Quantico, Virginia, at the FBI Academy. The things that are being done right here in Starkville at MSU with CAVS is state-of-the-art, cutting-edge technology that they have worked with us and MSU Police in developing data that will improve not only officer safety, but military personnel safety. And they get into all type of factors such as improving equipment that the officers use to make it more comfortable. And the only thing I can tell you that it's close to is like a virtual computer game when you go out there because they put the equipment on the officers, and you literally have a virtual reality of what the officer does. And that's a quick, simple overview of it, but it's quite a resource we have here that I had no idea that we would ever have access to. And I thought it was so impressive that I thought y'all should know what we've been doing for the past several months. And also want to publicly thank Daniel for supplying us with this ability to help law enforcement all over the world, and also for providing us with quite a bit of equipment that we've used to further this mission. So, Daniel, I don't want to stir your thunder. I'll let you go from here.
I want to thank the chief for their support on the project. They've been very open to us, which was somewhat surprising and exciting for us. Basically, I just wanted to give you a little history of how we started being involved with the law enforcement in Starkville PD, and we also worked with Mississippi State University Campus Law Enforcement. And talk about some of the projects that we've already done and that we're currently pursuing proposals and some things that are out kind of on the horizon for us. The way we got started, as you mentioned, the US Army has an interest in models of their soldiers and in soldier operations in general. What started out for us was looking for local collaborators that could give us some insight on the tactics that are implied... that are applied in military operations in urban terrain. And so, actually, one of my grad students, Mark Thomas, who pointed out that the SWAT team here would have some similar tactics for the Army and are generally more available as participants in research than the US Army and National Guard soldiers are right now. While we were working with them, it became clear that there were additional issues of interest in law enforcement, not just at the military level, for the human factors researchers at CAVS, things that were very interesting to us. So, we approached the CAVS administration, and they funded an internal project that we call the Law Enforcement Research Initiative for $38,000, which $5,000 of that went to a contract Starkville Police Department for equipment and access to some of their officers and some support for this law enforcement research. Some of the projects that we took up over the last nine months, one of them was the... during the qualifications for officers at the firing range, we were able to take some of our equipment. We have a portable eye tracker that we can put on people while they're performing tasks. We can see what they're looking at while they're doing these tasks. And so, we put it on some of the officers while they were qualifying, and we're watching how they look at the targets, how do they look at their gun, are they using their sights correctly? And there was one officer in particular that they were having some difficulty qualifying at the range, and we were able to put the eye tracker on him and show the training officers that video and allow them to diagnose the problem that the officer was having. And it ended up, he needed a vision referral, and he's got glasses now and was able to pass the qualifying afterwards. But we were glad to be able to help on something like that. We have two proposals that are out right now. One is to the National Institute of Justice, which is a part of the US Department of Justice. That is a project looking at body armor design. I don't know if you're familiar with personal body armor, but over the last few decades, that's been very effective in saving lives, but there are some significant known flaws in body armor design. One thing is that it's very uncomfortable in terms of heat retention, and over time, they get very hot and uncomfortable. Another issue is that the armholes on the sides are very large. And so, when they're front-facing to a suspect in a gunfight, they're relatively well-protected, but if they turn to the side or are surprised in an ambush-type scenario, they're basically unprotected on the sides and on the top. Some of the work that's being done at a university, Lawrence Tech University in Michigan, is to look at improved designs. What we're doing in the human factors lab, we have a motion capture system and some other equipment to look at human motion and posture. We're looking at how the changes in the designs are going to impact officer performance because we want to increase officer safety, but make sure they're still doing the job as well as they are today or better. That project, in terms of funding, is a two-year project that would come to about $300,000 for CAVS, which about $10,000 to $20,000 of that is going to start with Police Department against their equipment and support from one of their training officers from overtime for one of them. We also have a proposal to the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. This is actually a training proposal. Due to the recent events at Virginia Tech and some of the past events like Pearl High School, there's an interest in training patrol officers in active shooter techniques. So, the current policy is to, in an active shooter scenario, such as those, is to wait for the SWAT team to arrive. The evolving policy is actually to have patrol officers trained to respond to those events immediately, so they won't wait for tactical, they'll go in if there's somebody shooting at the same time. This will hopefully reduce casualties, civilian casualties, reduce the time that that person is allowed to be active shooting. There's a program at Texas State University called the Alert Program. The funding that we've requested is to send three Starkville PD officers and three MSU PD officers to that training at Texas State University, and then they would return and pass that training on to the patrol officers. The role of the researchers at Mississippi State University is to evaluate the effectiveness of that training. Basically, we would have patrol officers, we'll test them before and after they go through the training and see how effective that training is. In terms of funding, that's a one-year, $85,000 project. $10,000 of that's for Starkville PD for sending the officers to the training course. $16,000 is for MSU PD, the same training course, but we're also... One of the things about Starkville PD is they use the ammunition for training, which is the paintball-like rounds. MSU PD does not currently have that capability, and so, we're looking at bringing their training capability to the same level of Starkville's training so that they can do better training together at that same level. Some of the future projects that we're exploring, we're talking about video game environments. One of the things we're looking at right now is actually going out to public buildings. We observed a training event at Starkville High School with the Starkville Police Department. And that type of event, that type of training is very useful, but they don't get access to those buildings very often. One of the ideas we've had is to take those buildings, map them out into 3D video game levels, and make those levels privately available to the Police Department so that they could train and learn layouts of the buildings before they actually went to a building. And then, when they were called to that site, they would know where the rooms are, what different hideaways are in the building that suspects could use to hide in. We currently have... are in discussions with Homeland Security about a possible proposal to fund that kind of research this year. We also are interested in driving research, emergency response. This is not just law enforcement. We're looking at EMT training, firefighter training, anybody that would be doing high-speed day or night driving. We are in the process of purchasing a new driving simulator at CAVS that'll actually be on a motion base, so when you hit the brakes, it'll lurk forward. When you hit the gas, it pulls back, so you get the feeling of the forces that you would have in the car. Has a very large screen, and we'll actually have a full vehicle sitting on the motion base during training. And for that, we're looking at doing research and training. In the longer term, right now, we're talking to... We have a federal request for $4.9 million to build a new center that would be similar to the Center for Advanced Vehicular Systems, but would be focused on tactical, safety, performance, and reliability. So, the vision for the center is to do law enforcement and military research that, while trying to improve safety for officers and soldiers, trying to maximize their performance. So, we're trying to find the perfect trade-off between safety and performance there. One of the things that that center would be, not just for research, but also available for training. One of the things that that center would be, not just for research, but also available for training, similar to the Texas State University Alert Program. They're actually in discussion with Homeland Security about providing that training to the state of Mississippi. If we had that center, then that training would be done here and would be going through Mississippi State. Another thing at that center, we'd be looking at the reliability of equipment and gear. So, here in Starkville, we would be testing and evaluating the state-of-the-art equipment for law enforcement. And we would be making use of Starkville Police Department, Mississippi State University Police Department to test things like advanced computer-rated dispatch, different GPS systems, night vision, things like that. And so I think that's pretty much the program. You know, it started out as a little project to help the research we were already doing for the Army. We found several different projects with Starkville Police Department and with Mississippi State University Police Department that have been very interesting for us and could turn into large-funded projects where that would be beneficial to the public safety and the officer's safety. And I appreciate your time. And any support that you'd be willing to provide for these projects would be really helpful for us.
It's just amazing what's going on. I encourage any of you that haven't seen this to schedule an opportunity to go look at it. One of the things we're currently looking at in addition to these others, is when you get in a police car now, it's almost like a jet airplane fighter pilot cockpit. I mean, you've got a control panel for the lights and siren. You've got radios, you've got radars that go to the front and rear of the car. You've got in-car video cameras, you've got mobile data computers, you've got mounted shoulder weapons, mounted flashlights. All this is built around the officer. And in addition to that, all this stuff has to be mounted in such a way that if you're in a wreck and the airbag deploys, the equipment won't come up on the officer. So, all of those are considerations of some of the things we're trying to do. And we're lucky that we got this again and that we're being able to do it because only a major metropolitan police department usually is exposed to this type of opportunity. So, again, Daniel, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, General.
Chief, before y'all leave, again, these things outlined, the potential future projects and so forth with some things going on now. Have we ever entered upon the minutes, and I cannot recall, authorization for this collaboration between the two? If we have not, it probably would be appropriate to do so.
It would be a wonderful thing to go ahead and take up that bit of housecleaning. It started out as us just providing officers' own duty to go out and go through these exercises. But now I think we've progressed to the point where we should probably consider doing that.
All right. I would move, then, that the board authorize the Starkville Police Department to participate with the Center for Advanced Vehicle Systems in the projects outlined. Of course, these future projects subject to the appropriate contracts, sub-grantee agreements, all those things, depending on exactly what it is, which you can come back to us as projects materialize. And so I would move approval of this, preliminary approval of this collaboration between the Starkville Police Department and the Center for Advanced Vehicle Systems.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to Mr. Haynes from the airport, in which we're doing a land swap here. We're being one of the cities that participate in the Golden Triangle Airport. Have to approve this if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. My name's Mike Haynes. I'm the executive director of Golden Triangle Regional Airport. I'm here today to ask your approval for, as the mayor said, for a resolution to approve a land swap between the airport and Lowndes County Industrial Development Authority, who will then use the land and heat it to Four County Electric Power for a substation to support the PACR truck engine project. As the mayor said, as one of the sponsors of the airport, our charter requires all five sponsors of the airport to approve any disposition of land, including a land swap. This property that we're providing is on the northwest part of the airport, adjacent to the PACR site. And the property that we're getting is on the east side and adjacent to some existing airport property. We've had the property appraised and it's of equal value. And basically, what we need now is the approval of all the different agencies.
Do we have a motion?
Are we the first agency with whom you've talked?
Actually, you're the fourth. Columbus, Ockival County, and Lowndes have approved. West Point is taking it up at the meeting next week.
I would move approval, then, of the proposed land swap between the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Authority and the Lowndes County Industrial Authority, as outlined in the resolution here, and would move adoption of this resolution.
Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Ben, brings it down to the public here on adoption of B-1 Buffer District. Is this is the public hearing aspect of this?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, board, the item before you this evening is a, is a, is an ordinance to amend and revise the B-1 Buffer District zoning regulations in the city zoning ordinances. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval. They made one minor change on your, on your draft ordinance. I believe it's on page five. And it's double underlined. It was just an explanation, clarification, for the minimum square footage for each unit of a duplex structure. So, that was all that was added, was per unit, just as a clarification for that.
Ms. Rick, excuse me. Where exactly is that change again? Page five?
Page five. I'm sorry. Under four.
Four.
E.
E, okay.
It's right about where the T is on the watermark. It's kind of hard to see there.
All right.
But that was the only change that was made by the Planning and Zoning Commission, just to clarify, as a square, so that it was per unit, not per structure. Since the, since the ordinance was advertised, I've talked to a couple of folks, including this afternoon, and there were a couple of things that came up. And these are some things that maybe y'all would like to consider and recommend. And I would, in considering this, would recommend that it is revised. On page two, under section one, in the intent and the clarification or explanation of the Buffer District, just about at the end of that paragraph, there's a sentence that says, "No retail merchandise used shall be opened for business before 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM unless authorized by the mayor and Board of Alderman." The reason that that was placed in there was because with this B-1 Buffer District regulation, the types of businesses that would go in these areas that are adjacent to single-family residential primarily and commercial, this would kind of limit the types of businesses that would be there. If there was to be something else that would be open, well, I'm getting back up. A neighborhood-type business like a dry cleaners, a bakery, a retail bakery that's open primarily during the day, opens early, closes early, those types of things. If you look under the permitted use chart, one of the items, for instance, that we have on there is a restaurant. Well, most restaurants are open in the evening. So, after talking to several folks, probably the best idea would be to, in this case, would to strike retail merchandise use, or, excuse me, retail merchandise and have it where it's "No use shall be opened for business before 7:00 AM and after 7:00 PM unless authorized by the mayor." So, the mayor and Board of Alderman. What that's going to do is, as these developments come forward and y'all review them as part of a site plan or if it's an exception, which is a special-use exception, which, for instance, a restaurant is a good example of that. Or a commercial gymnasium like a Bally's or an LA Fitness that has opened at longer hours to accommodate folks that is part of that site plan approval, a convenience store, those types of things. As part of that site plan, the hours of operation can be approved and part of conditions of approval for a site, for a site plan or a project. If that was the case, one of the items in particular that came up would be an indoor theater, similar to the Hollywood cinema over on Stark Road. That would fall right under restaurant on page four, at the bottom of page four, and that can be added to be included as that type of use. I inadvertently left that out because we do have, under permitted use, we have amusement, indoor amusements, and I thought that was included under amusements, but it is called out separately under the permitted use chart. So, with those two recommendations for changes, I think that would cover. I don't know if we're going to have anyone else this evening. This is a second public hearing and there was no comments made at the Planning and Zoning Commission except that the commission made that one revision. So, if there's any others. But I would feel very confident that making those two revisions, striking that one sentence and adding the other, that that would accommodate the intent of the district, of the Buffer District ordinance.
Is there any citizen that would like to speak out against this particular ordinance? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and board, my name is John Lee. I don't know where I want to speak against it or not. Just have to say. I was only made aware of this this afternoon and concerned, potentially concerns my property. And I don't understand what, what they're changing. I live, I used to live outside city limits and I'm in city limits. City incorporates, my property was rezoned, rezoned commercial. So, I'm assuming that this affects us.
No, this is for B-1. That's, I should clarify that. We've received a couple of calls and some folks had come in asking about the Buffer District. This is the zoning Buffer District. This isn't the buffer yard area requirement that we have for developments. Those are two different things. The Buffer District is intended to serve as a transitional type of zoning between dissimilar uses such as residential and commercial. I think there was some mistake about people thinking this regarded the buffer yard area requirements that we have when we do developments and commercial development. So, there's a little difference. This is not affecting the commercial zoning. This is strictly for the B-1 Buffer District zoning. That's one of our zoning classifications on our zoning map.
So, you're not affected if you've got commercial as zoned property?
So, so the Buffer Zone that we was, that they told us we'd have when we incorporated in city, hasn't changed in what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
You're talking about a Buffer zoning or a Buffer area?
Buffer area.
Buffer area. This is not affect that. This is different. This is a Buffer Zone. See, and that's one of the reasons why I'm not real fond of this particular type of zoning because it is a little misleading. And the effort to clarify the regulations and the uses was to try to make it serve its intended purpose of providing a transitional area between different zonings. There's different ways to do it, you know, by use of other zoning classifications. This particular zoning classification was intended to do that and it didn't do a real good job of it because the requirements were kind of vague and kind of pulled from the different areas adjacent. And as it ended up, it was kind of hard to try to figure out which would apply and where. So, this, I think, and the Planning and Zoning Commission seemed to agree that this is a good way to put something firm in place that would serve its intended purpose.
So, if it doesn't, if nothing has changed far as our zoning goes, I'm going to have a problem. Only, I don't think I respect the essence of it. Anytime that somebody's, if you change stuff that might potentially concern your property, that maybe should, you know, because this is coming forward. The board will be voted on tonight. Apparently, it's been talked to and the planning and zoning, and we wasn't even, and the people around, and my neighbor wasn't even aware of it.
This is a zoning that has to be applied for. Is that not right, Ben, under the current situation?
It's not a rezoning. It's a change in the zoning regulations.
That's all it is. It's not a rezoning of any properties.
That doesn't change the Buffer, Buffer Zone either.
It doesn't change the Buffer Zone. It changes the requirements of the Buffer District, the zoning district.
So, does that limit us to what the product could be used though?
Yes.
That does. But if you're a C-2, it does not have any applicable, doesn't apply to it. For example, if you had C-2, that you had a nice residential area here, the folks in the residential area might like for some type of Buffer Zone to be applied.
I understand that, right.
And so, as far as I'm, my knowledge is, I don't know that we have particular, many areas, if any, that are, that have this particular zoning. Do we, Ben, other than recently?
There were about ten or twelve individual parcels, and I believe, when I'd looked at those, I think there were six or eight owners of about twelve parcels. And most of them were, as intended, between a residential area and a commercial area. A lot of them are along Highway 25, along that, along that quarter. That's where the majority of them are. There's a few others scattered, but that's the majority of them.
West of Highway 25.
There's one on Garrett, Garrett Road, and there's one that kind of, it's an odd shape around the USDA building at 25 and Reed Road.
There's also one around Highland Estates neighborhood.
Highland, that's, oh, I'm sorry, west. I thought you said east. I'm sorry. Highlands and also around Pine Crest, Pine?
That's, that's, that's what, that's the flat lane I'm referring to.
Right. Down southwest of the intersection. Those are probably the, I think there's three individual parcels there. There's about four around Highlands. The one on Garrett Road is being developed as Great American Homes, the duplexes that are, that were approved about two months ago. They'll have it from it, I believe, next week to begin site work and begin construction.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I had a call this afternoon and I'm really not up to, you know, I don't really understand what's going on. My question is, what I'd like to have understanding before I leave here, is that it really hasn't, it's only affected the Buffer? Hasn't changed the Buffer Zone, which is a fence off 25 feet?
That, that's a Buffer area.
Area.
This ordinance is for the Buffer zoning district. Those are two different things.
And that limits what can, what can go in there.
Well, it established setbacks. It established minimum square footages for single-family residential and also for duplex structures. And also the uses, the permitted uses and the uses by exception in the use chart. See, that's one of the things that's been confusing, is Buffer area is part of a project in Buffer Zone, which is a zoning classification.
Since, could, could we ask to just be, because we're trying to get to other neighborhoods in that Pine Crest, other neighbors, Pine Crest Southern, because we have such short time to do it, you know, don't have time for everybody to be aware of what's going on. Could this be delayed or put out to, till we have time to talk with the Planning and Zoning?
Is Pine Crest currently zoned?
Pine Crest is, I believe, R1. And then there's a Buffer Zone, about three parcels between that. And there's some C-2 zoning that run from that area all the way to where New Light Road and Highway 12 at Triangle.
So, it's already zoned, B-1?
It's already zoned, B-1.
Okay. And, but Pine Crest is R1.
Yes, sir. R1.
And then past the B-1 zoning is the C-2 zoning. Is that correct?
All the way to the corner, yes.
All right. Now, I want to go back to your question. And what are you asking in regard to this?
We were, we was told by the previous mayor and one night upstairs in the Planning Committee, Zoning Committee, I guess it's called, that, you know, this property would have, on the west side of that property would be either a 25-foot Buffer Zone, you know, would, you know, you'd have trees or something, or either a fence. Then when you stand on the ground, you're looking up, you know, you couldn't see any buildings or anything. And we understood that. My question is, has that changed?
Was that part of a plat or a covenant or? Because that's not part of, that wasn't part of the Buffer zoning, either the previous one or this one. That might have been a part of.
It wasn't in the city, the previous thing.
I understand. I understand that.
And your question is, you would like for us to hold this. Now, this is, from what I understand, Ben, has nothing to do with what he's talking about. Is that correct?
Well, it sounds like Mr. Lee is asking about a Buffer Yard area or a Buffer area for a project.
Right.
Which is what I'm trying to say, is there, this is a Buffer Zone, not a Buffer area or a Buffer Yard.
And that's where he was starting out with his statement that this can be confusing, you know, with what you're interpreting.
Especially since I didn't have time to, the neighbors didn't have any time, you know, to, to be informed what's, what's going on. Because we, we'd never been informed, you know, something's been, been, thought about being changed.
Well, we did, we did do an advertisement in the, in the newspaper for the PNC hearing, as well as we did for, for this hearing this evening. And the hearing for this evening was, included the entire ordinance as approved by the PNC. So, there were, we did have two publications for the hearing.
That would be left up to the board. And what is your pleasure, board, in regard to this, to wait till the next meeting?
That would be fine with me, Mr. Mayor, and we can resolve any miscommunication or misunderstanding about exactly what we're talking about. And Ben can.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think I represented some of these people where I'm thinking about it. Down here where Highway 12 and New Light splits off. about it, down here where Highway 12, New Light splits off, and with the previous board had got all that property zoned, I think it was zoned commercial. Every property owner requests in there, they, they might need some time to look it up.
Well, we have a big map of all of this and how this is zoned. We have a correct one upstairs, I hope. And I would urge everyone who would have concerns to go up and take a look at it and make sure that you're thoroughly familiar with what's going on here, because there's nothing any more disappointing than changing one's properties without their knowledge. That's just not right.
I agree with you, sir.
And if it's the board's pleasure, would you mind if we hold this until the next board meeting and give these residents an opportunity to look at how this issue is, is done and a little bit better understanding? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, also, Mr. McLaurin will remember, at one time I litigated something against the city on behalf of a property owner who had not gotten a written notice of a change, either in the regulation or in how the property was zoned. Jeff Brand refused to, refused to allow that change to be enforced. If they were actually going to have a change on the ground in their, it was in the old 1965 ordinance that Mr. Richmond wrote, but Mr. McLaurin will remember, because Mr. McLaurin was in the hearing that day.
Uh, and if I.
They didn't need to get personal notice.
Uh, if I understand this, this is not really rezoning anyone's properties, is that right, Ben?
No, it's right.
This is just only a new suggestion of reading of what a B1 zoning is.
Right, but in a sense, that, that it can be a rezoning if it restricts it.
Well, this is the reason everyone needs to have the opportunity to go review this.
I said, we wasn't aware of it, because like, like the gentleman said, we haven't.
Not all of you read the paper, then?
I read the paper. I have to admit, I don't read those things like that.
Hey, Ben?
Yes, sir.
It sounded like there was only a handful of current B1 landowners, is that?
I, I want to say there were, I want to say 12 individual parcels. And when I looked them up, there were about eight owners, because several of them were contiguous, and, and one person owned two or three, and another one owned three, and...
Would it make sense to contact them and just to forward them, you know, a copy of this so that they're fully informed? I mean, certainly a good point is made, and it doesn't, if it, we're only talking about eight people, it doesn't seem like it'd be an undue hardship to do that.
Well, and I, and I talked to the city attorney about that, because I read the statute, and my understanding was, if it was a rezoning, absolutely yes, we'd need their approval. And I personally, as part of that, would ask for them written authorization, whether I sent that to them, if we did it as a blanket or what have you. But, and I, and that was part of the reason I asked Mr. Faber, was because there was only, I thought, going to be about eight or nine owners to do that. But in discussion with him, and I guess part of it was what I had thought of, if we, if we did this for one, and we just changed the regulations, because my understanding from this board, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission, eventually we're going to revise all of the zoning regulations, either in pieces or in blocks, however we do that. And if we do that for this one with only six or eight, what about when we do another one that's got 800? So it's kind of one of those, the statutes are pretty clear as far as doing it for, as, as advertised in the newspaper, since it's not a rezoning, it's a change in the regulations. So if we did it for this one, if we, we'd be establishing a precedent, and that was one of the things, if we're going to do it for now, we're going to do it for every one. That's why we use the newspaper, because it general circulation. And we had two public hearings. This is the second one. And if the board wanted to do that, I can certainly do that. I can look at it and send those out. I think I've talked to a couple of them on the phone, and they seemed okay with it.
Let's, let's go two more weeks, all right? And get these landowners and people the opportunity to look and thoroughly feel comfortable with what's happening. Would that be reasonable, boy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Experience, has a strong plan for the future, and he's earned the trust and respect of his men. He deserves this chance to lead the fire department. And I say that, and I understand that there are other people who feel like there was another candidate or candidates who could have served, and that's certainly true. But I hope that tonight we can all agree that Mr. Godan is qualified to be fire chief here in Starfall. And then I think the vote tonight is, is whether we want to move forward with a qualified candidate for fire chief. And I think our fire department deserves nothing less. And, and tonight, then, is about what's right, it's what's fair, and what's best for the fire department. If we try to look at this as who wins, who loses, politics as usual, we know we've all lost. We've, the, the community's lost, the fire department's lost, and then we certainly individually, as a mayor and board, have lost. But we do have an opportunity to do the right thing. And I think that right thing is to resolve this issue tonight, to place a qualified person in as chief of the fire department. Again, one who has the experience, has the vision, has the respect of his men, and, and I just ask that we all consider that when we think about this vote, not about how we may have voted the first time around, or conversations that have happened before and since. But how can we move forward? What do we need to do to go from here? And I respectfully offer a motion, then, to override the mayor's veto of the previous board order to hire David Godan as fire chief.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to override my veto of two weeks ago. And without any further.
I'd like to have a word.
Go ahead.
I would be very much in support of the same as all of my cops has brought to the board tonight. I think that we should give consideration to the fact that there's a lot of people in the city of Starfall is very, very upset with the action that we've taken for the veto. I'm concerned, because I, at one day, got 34 calls about our veto from citizens here in Starfall. And, and almost concerned me is the fact that we say that we want to expand the reviews, that it's, in my opinion, and I have a right to my opinion, as well as any other mayor or board member, that we could say that in the next election for mayor and board of Aldman, that we need to go outside the city limits, because we don't have anybody qualified in the city of Starfall to serve as a mayor and board of Aldman. And that's exactly what we're saying. And now, I resent very much of saying that Mr. David Godan is not qualified. He has ever qualified case, and I think it's an injustice to the fire department and the higher ranking officials of the fire department to overlook this and to him attempt to hire somebody from outside of the fire department. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to say anything this time? You want to say something?
Sure, I actually, I've been thinking about this a lot. And I started writing and wrote some notes to myself, and then, because I sometimes forget things, made that into a statement that I was going to go ahead and read out loud. And it's going to sound kind of harsh, but I think some of these things need to be said. You know, in our society, and especially since the attacks of September 11th, our firefighters carry a well-deserved reverence. And while enjoying that reverence, they must also remember that theirs is a responsibility that theirs is a position of great responsibility. Unfortunately, it seems that some of our firefighters have been keen of late to abuse that reverence in an effort to avoid some of their responsibility. The role of fire chief is to make sure that those in his command are adhering to their responsibilities. We need a fire chief that will make sure that our firefighters are following their exercise regimen instead of engaging in recreation while on duty. We need a fire chief that will ensure our fire stations are effective and efficient workplaces rather than social gathering spots. We need a fire chief that has a plan and a vision for the department rather than a desire to maintain the status quo. We need a fire chief that will work to improve our city's fire rating, thereby making us safer and saving us money. As an alderman, it is my responsibility to attend to the needs of this city, and that's why I have cast the votes that I have in search for fire chief. We have been bombarded with phone calls, flooded with email, criticized in the press, and generally landblasted publicly, because a vocal minority is not happy with the decisions we have made. Our firefighters understand that the reverence they enjoy makes them very sacred to us, and some of them have tried to use that status to force this board into letting them have their way. We have been told that we should pick the candidate with the most experience. I would remind some of the people making that claim, that just because someone has worked a printing press or run a delivery route for a newspaper for 20 years, doesn't mean that they're qualified to edit the paper in year 21. We have been told that our firefighters will resist an external fire chief, and that many of them would leave the department. If that turned out to be true, then those firefighters are obviously not interested in living up to their responsibility and should leave anyway. We have also been told that some of our firefighters will not work well, and this has been suggested, under a black chief. It was not that long ago that this city had a black fire chief, and anyone who even attempts to insinuate that racism should guide the sports thinking has no place in public service. All the ugliness that has arisen out of our search for fire chief is one symptom of what I think is a much larger problem. Only this board has had the opportunity to review the various candidates' resumes and sit through their interviews. It's my belief that because this process has been conducted in such secrecy, that so much misinformation has been spread, and so many underhanded efforts at persuading us have been undertaken. If we would open the search, like Columbus did recently with their police chief, for our department heads to public witness, then we would not find ourselves in such an undesirable position. If the public had the opportunity to hear from their potential servants themselves, then the feedback we receive would be based on the candidate's actual performance and not on the opinions of a boisterous few. With that, I would encourage my fellow aldermen to sustain the mayor's veto. I would encourage them to make the search for future department heads a matter of public, so that everyone concerned can have the complete benefit of information that we, as an alderman, enjoy in the meeting. After all, we are public servants, and the department heads, we hire our public servants. It's the best interest in the public, that it is the best interest of the public that should guide our actions. But I would also finally, finally say that regardless of who is made our next fire chief, I believe that in the end, we should come together, and we should give them the support and resources of the city.
Anyone else? At this time, we will have a roll call vote. I will call the individuals at random basically here. Mrs. Self, do you vote in favor of the amendment, of the motion and the amendment to override the veto?
I vote against.
Mr. Perkins is not here. Mr. Cox?
Yea.
Mr. Corey?
Nay.
Mr. Mills?
Yea.
Mr. McLaurin?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yea.
It fails. It takes five votes to override the veto. There's not the fifth vote here. So the veto stands at this point. We'll move on to our next item of business.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, may I speak?
You may.
I don't write out speeches, because I speak from the heart, and I speak from experience, uh, maturity. My vote is not against Mr. Godan personally, so I want that understood, so no one will have to leave here tonight and speak to the media on my behalf, and saying why I voted the way that I voted. It has nothing personally to do with the individual. I am voting at this time for what I feel is in the best interest of the fire department and the city of Starfall. I will always vote what I feel is in the best interest for Starfall. And that is my reason for voting at this time the way that I did. So I want to speak for myself, so that no one will leave this table tonight and say what I meant. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I've essentially been out of town for the better part of the last two weeks on university business and the last week, university and city business. When I got back to town, I was somewhat amazed to see this uproar that was occurring with regard to this particular matter. I was particularly amazed to see Alderman Mills talking about things that went on in an executive session, violating the spirit of the executive session matter, and talking about those things, as Ms. Self pointed out in a newspaper article, talking about them somewhat incorrectly. I was further amazed to see Alderman Cox essentially doing the same type of thing. This matter of executive session issues is something that can cause the city considerable problems of a legal nature further down the road. So was just amazed to find all these comments in the newspaper. Further amazed to find Alderman speaking for other Alderman, attempting to explain why they are doing what they're doing, no one asking those particular Alderman. And the process just continued on and on and on. The, the public good, to which Alderman Cox referred at an earlier meeting, really requires that the board of Aldman fully and completely discuss issues, particularly personnel issues. This particular matter, in my opinion, had still not received a final discussion of positions that some of the Alderman were taking. I, for example, would like to have heard Mr. Corey be able to explain part of what he did tonight as to his particular position. Would like to have heard more from Ms. Self about her particular position. For whatever reason, Alderman Cox and Mills chose to force the issue, which was not really yet ripe for discussion. So here we are again, having come full circle. Let me hasten to say that, as is reflected by my vote tonight to override the mayor's veto, I fully support the promotion of internal personnel, where there are qualified individuals available to fill that spot. In this particular case, without making any judgment on that at all, all I do know is that this matter needed a little additional discussion. And then further, there are some peripheral matters, not connected directly to the appointment of the fire chief, but directly connected to the organization and operation of the fire department, that needed a little discussion. And so I was just very, very disappointed in the issue being forced before the board could achieve as solid a consensus as it possibly could. And, and frankly amazed by the comments I read in the newspaper.
Let's hear what you got to say.
Well, I'd like to inform Mr. McLaurin that what I say is strictly my business and absolutely none of your business. And I've been informed by the Stennis Institute that you know very little about legality of Sydney, because you don't have anything to do with city business any longer, you are a county employee. And you are constantly trying to mislead the citizens of Starfall by your technology of how smart you are in legalities. And as I've said before, I don't see how the other cities around us can operate a city without a PC McLaurin. And as far as what I have to say, I can assure you, I will say it with no reservations and expect no rebuttal from you, Mr. McLaurin, because... expect no rebuttal from you, Mr. McLaurin, because I want you to be a pub-- I want this to be a public record that you do not frighten me in any way and you do not scare me with your fancy talking. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to spout out here? If not, we will move on to the next item of on the agenda. And that is consideration of appointment of the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Commission. And we have, you have two candidates that have submitted letters, Mr. Frank Childs and Mr. Jeffrey Cassidy. Or I saw Mr. Childs comes in. Is Mr. Cassidy here? Okay, excellent. Frank, would you like to come up and talk to the board in regard to your desire to be-- Did anybody call Mr. Cassidy about the interview tonight? All right. Frank, how are you tonight?
Fine, fine. Mr. Mayor, how are you doing? Members of the Board of Aldermen, I'm Frank Childs. I know most of you, others I know by reputation. I am resident of the city of Starkville for the past 30 years. I'm in private business here in Starkville. I have served on different boards in the area of Starkville. I have been president of the Chamber of Commerce at one time, president of Rotary Club, been involved in two successful school bond issues in the city of Starkville. And now, when I saw the fact that the Golden Triangle Regional Airport had a opening, I applied for that. Let me kind of, kind of give you a sidebar on this thing. I think we owe debt of gratitude to Stuart Vance for the work that he did over the past several years that he served in this, in this, on this board. The airport made lots of expansions in the facilities out there, in the runway, now have a control tower and this type of thing. I think that, that airports are an economic tool to a community. I think that the Golden Triangle Regional Airport is certainly an economic tool to the major players here in the Golden Triangle and certainly Starkville is a major player. The Golden Triangle at the moment is not represented by the city of Starkville because Mr. Vance's term of office has expired. And I'm coming before you and telling you because of that, I'm interested in serving in this capacity. And I just would, if you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them at this time.
Start your end of the table.
I don't have any, any questions for Mr. Childs other than just to voice my verbal support for, for his appointment to this board and I think he'd make an excellent appointment and represent the city of Starkville very well and, and help move the airport in a positive direction.
Ms. Self, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Mills?
Mr. McLaurin?
Oh, I've known Frank Childs for these many years, a good man.
Thank you.
Matt?
Did a--
I have a couple of questions, if I may. First of all, that I hear from all the citizens that we have a lack of competition with our planes. You can only go one direction from the airport and that's east, cannot go west.
As a concern I hear.
A pack car plans on bringing 5,500 passengers a year here. Their headquarters is west. How do you see and what kind of effect do you feel like influence you might have on the board here to help guide them to a more generous offerings of directions and so forth from the airport?
I was going to a convention in Las Vegas. I had to fly to the terminal in Atlanta and then fly back over Starkville to do that. At one time, you used to be able to fly from, from the Golden Triangle to Dallas and then get a connecting flight to that area. When, when they discontinued, and I don't, you know, the, the airport didn't discontinue this. The airport would have loved to have had this. I feel like that we've got to get more players into, into the area here in order to better serve the, the citizens of Starkville and of the Golden Triangle. So I think it's incumbent on, on the board to continue to search for carriers, to bring in a service that would take us west or maybe connect us with points to the, to the north on this thing. But if, if you're going west, you've got to go east first.
That's always made it kind of crazy. The other issue that I find very interesting is that the same company that services us has already put a direct flight in from Tupelo to Cincinnati in which they don't even have a plant built up there yet, which is the headquarters of Toyota, which is quite interesting. And I would hope that if you're appointed, that you would investigate those particular issues and make it to where we would have a more of an option in regard to air travel from here.
Well, I plan to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next gentleman has sent a letter back and you've had, you've had his letter in your file, you've had it previously. We did not act on this before. He is not here tonight. That's probably some of the fault of us here in the office in which most of us were gone from the offices last week. We do have his letter here. He is the co-founder of Semisouth. He has done a lot of flying and is quite familiar with airports in and out. I can't say any more than that about the individual. I know, I don't know the individual very well at all. At this time, I would hear from the board any recommendation on that part.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I, I would be happy to, to make the motion to appoint Mr. Childs. If, if you are looking for a motion, if you feel that we need to hold that for two weeks, I can do that as well. If you want to sense, you basically said it's y'all's fault he ain't here. If you want to hold it and give him the opportunity to come.
What's the feelings of the other members of the board here about holding this or would you like to go ahead and pursue here? Mr. Childs will investigate, I'll tell you that. My associations with him over the years has been that he's very thorough in regard to that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for a motion, I'll move the appointment of Frank Childs to Golden Triangle Regional Airports Board Authority from appointment from the city of Starkville.
Second. We have two seconds. We have motion and second. All this, and I think we could do this with a yea vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Give us a good representation, Frank. We look forward to you representing us. The next item that we have on the board business is consideration of the final approval of Avalorum Tax Exemption. This is the third, I believe, Ms. Sproul, is that correct? Of WeVex that we approved several months ago? The application, this is one of the final processes of getting all their tax exempt Process. This is the third of three, I believe. Is that not right? The third of three?
Yes. They worked a plot of the board and the board gave them all the budget that tax commission and the tax management funds that they are in the working tax. Decision of the board to make a final decision when they granted the tax.
Do we have the documents? Uh, here's your document.
It's on the table.
What's that?
It's on the table.
It's on the table?
Yes, sir.
Ah, yes, thank you.
Mayor, um, so the board reviews the documentation and can I say something real quick?
Go ahead.
I believe it was six to one last time I voted against it and I was just going to state that the reason I did was they, if I'm not mistaken, previously have had a tax exemption with this.
Correct.
Currently have one ongoing. This would be the third and then they're looking at the possibility of applying for four. And I just would rather, if we're going to give some of our local businesses the benefit of a tax exemption, spread that around some more. So that was my primary reason for voting against it.
Do we have a motion that we, we approve this third phase of the tax exemption consideration? Final.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the granting of the Avalorum Tax Exemption actually continuation to WeVex Incorporated. This exemption is for a period of 10 years from and after January the first, 2006. The total true value of being exempted for this period of time and of course does not include school taxes is $5,628,786.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion with a second. We'll do a roll call vote here. We'll start at the west end of the table. Mr. Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Self?
Aye.
Mr. Corey?
Nay.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
What'd you say?
Yea.
Yea. Mr. McLaurin?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This brings us down to the airport's consent. Office of the City Clerk, approval of claims docket.
Mayor and Board, I move that we approve claims docket June 28th, July 7th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
This brings us down to personnel and we have one, where's Doug? I saw him here. Could you come up if you don't mind? And this is a hiring that I think you had envy with and could you kind of just give us a, just a real quick description of responsibilities and a little bit about the person that we've hired here?
I'll be happy to, Mayor. And just for sake of accuracy, I'm going to read off the job description so I'll be sure I don't miss anything. Responsibilities for this position include overseeing the purchasing functions, inventory control functions, payroll functions, vehicle maintenance shop, shop support functions, customer service and dispatch functions, underground fuel storage tanks and pumps, also to provide and oversee other administrative support services to include maintaining files on employees, filing workman's compensation and liability insurance claims, et cetera. This position supervises two employees and has accountability for the monetary, fiscal, legal, budgetary, safety and environmental issues related to the work for which this position is responsible and those for which this position supervise. Person that's in this position must have knowledge of office purchasing and inventory management procedures, basic bookkeeping, Microsoft Office software, Windows, Word, Excel Outlook, and specialized work order and inventory management software systems.
Anyone like to ask Doug a question?
Out of curiosity, Doug, approximately, how many applicants did you get for the position?
We had four applicants, Mr. McLaurin. Patsy was by far the most qualified. As, as a matter of fact, our second choice, if, if Patsy had turned, turned us down, was someone less qualified, which John and I had agreed we wouldn't offer this high starting salary too. But, but Ms. Moore has actually worked for Mastech Utility Contractors for several years. Prior to that, worked for Waste Services, you know, the solid waste management company managing the offices there. And she came on the market because their Mastech is closing down those offices. So that's why, you know, person that's qualified was, became available to us. The thing we were concerned about is she was making $11,000 more than what the salary here, you know, the starting salary is here. But, you know, she decided, you know, she wanted to stay in this area and would take that sizable a pay cut to, to come work for the city. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. I would move then that the city employ Patsy G. Moore as manager of support services at the grade 11 step one salary position classification.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Doug, don't run off, I need to talk to you after the meeting.
That brings us down to a recess. Do you want to state the items on consent?
To remove real quick? Okay, what item might that be, Ms. Mayor?
Sorry, that would be under public services, number three.
This is issue, you need to recuse yourself.
Yes, I need to recuse myself.
All right. Well, go on and get up.
Go on, get up and get out of here. That's what we learned. Do I have a motion that--
Hold on, ma'am.
All right. He's got to leave.
Yeah.
We did learn that.
So, Mr. Mayor, my motion amended would be all the items enumerated on the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting with the exception of--
Item three.
Item 10F3 with the minutes reflecting that Alderman Corey has recused himself.
We will vote on that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second. All those opposed, nay. Now we'll go back and we'll pick that particular item up, request authorization except the lowest and best bid from tri-state utility contractors.
Would move acceptance of the lowest and best bid from tri-state utility contractors for the Jack and Boar on the Mississippi Highway 12 in the bid amount of $40,894.60.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second. All those opposed, nay. Now we'll go back and we'll pick that particular item up, request authorization except the lowest and best bid from tri-state utility contractors.
Would move acceptance of the lowest and best bid from tri-state utility contractors for the Jack and Boar on the Mississippi Highway 12 in the bid amount of $40,894.60.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Do I hear a motion that we recess? So ordered to July 17. So ordered till July 17th.